A lot of board members, I think, are people who are frustrated educators.
Yeah.
Tracks me up because I tell people all the time, you know, the only people that can understand educators are probably restaurateurs. Because everybody and their mother wants to open a restaurant. You know, that's like the the number one dream of a lot of people. I want to open a restaurant. But restaurants are the top failing business in the country. Probably our second, because people have played dolly, you know, growing up and, you know, they're the teacher and they've got their dials lined up and. From a resource. From a resource allocation standpoint, from human resources, you know, development, well, first attraction and then development. All of it, including facilities and operations and transportation and food service. All of it has to do with creating an environment that's conducive to learning. And, you know, we can't lose track of that. I think I spent a lot of time working with school boards and. School boards are some of the boringest meetings. I've been blessed. The last eight years I've had the greatest boards that I've ever, you know. Encountered, you know, to be able to work with, because they were really truly focused on the academic outcomes and they were very supportive. These were people who stayed in their lanes, you know, because a lot of board members, I think, are people who are frustrated educators.
Yeah.
Tracks me up because I tell people all the time, you know, the only people that can understand educators are probably restaurateurs. Because everybody and their mother wants to open a restaurant. You know, that's like the the number one dream of a lot of people. I want to open a restaurant. But restaurants are the top failing business in the country. Probably our second, because people have played dolly, you know, growing up and, you know, they're the teacher and they've got their dials lined up. And acting like they're teaching the class. And, you know, everybody is frustrated because, you know, they want to, they want to do that. And just because you sat at a desk like everybody else and walked in a schoolhouse like everybody else, doesn't mean you understand this this business. Because it is that, you know, there's a method to our madness. And and we were trained to do it. I think you and I have had conversations before about how it's so important to maintain the professionalism. Of our field.
Yeah.
And not, you know, allow it to to sink because of a teacher shortage, you know, and we just. Get anybody that we can, you know, get in front of kids because this business is too important. What we do every day is too important than, you know, just to put any old body in front of of students. So, anyway, that's not a tip. I guess the tip that I would say is to treat, treat this, treat this field, treat your profession with respect. And don't let anybody else disrespect it. And you respect it every day by recognizing the gravity of what what you do every day. I mean, we're, we're, we're.
Right.
That day that we got up and fought through traffic and then a coffee spilled on us as we were driving through, you know, stoplights and all that stuff. And as annoyed as we might be and.
Yeah.
As though it's a regular routine day, that might be the the day that one kid has never got it, gets it. It might be the one day that that kid remembers for the rest of their life. And, you know, we can't, we can't lose sight of the fact that the gravity of what we do is so impactful and so important. So I would say treat it with deference, treat it with respect. I've never wanted, I didn't fall into teaching. I want an education. I wanted to be an educator. I always wanted, I wanted to to lead schools and I wanted to make. Opportunities for our our community and for our students to be, you know, as good and on par with. If not better than some of the options that go on in the suburbs, you know. I think that every kid in America deserves world-class educational opportunities. And there's no reason for us to not deliver on it because we have the capacity to do it.
And so just to introduce you, I got my brother Reginald Kirkland, Dr. Kirkland, with me today on the Calona Podcast. Already come and spinning hot fire from the beginning. I didn't even have to tell you what the voice was, but you know the voice is a brother man. How you doing this morning? How you doing this evening? What's up?
I'm doing really well. I hope that I wasn't just rambling and.
No, no, it's okay, man. I like, I like how, you know, you could take over. I tell people this is your podcast, it's not just mine. And so you can feel free to take over. But again, thank you so much for just kind of resetting the, you know, just. Putting respect on the educators, putting respect on the name and letting people know that, you know, it's about the kids. It is not about a power struggle. And you mentioned that board meetings were boring. So real quickly, can you just briefly tell me why board meeting is so boring? Is it by design? Or is it just, you know, I don't know.
They they're boring because the, and this is not all bores. Like I said, I was blessed to have the last eight years a great board. Two great bores, actually. But what happens too often is, you know, fixation on budgets. And facilities, things like that. And as I said in the beginning, I don't know if that was caught or captured on, on. On the recording, but, you know, everything that we do is, is got, has got to be aligned to teaching for learning. That's our core business.
Right.
And if you go to a board meeting, oftentimes, the board meeting starts out with budgets, you know, discussion about where, you know, where we are with our. From our fiscal standpoint, the the chief financial officer takes up about, you know, sixty-five percent of the meeting time. And then, you know, after you wake up from hearing that drawn, it is obviously stuff you could read. Then a kid topic comes up or the educational topic will come up. And the superintendent, I've been in that role where, you know, they'll ask me to discuss the academic, you know, culture. And what's going on and what are what accomplishments, you know, the kids have had. And I intentionally take up as much time as not more than the CFO, because I insist that that's really what we do. In fact, I usually put my report over the CFO's and makes, makes the CFO's report second. Because all that is second. Everything that that he talks about, she talks about, and any operations people talk about. Their whole purpose is to buttress the academic program. We don't build schools for financial, you know, reports. Or finances. We don't build schools for for buses. We don't build schools for food service. We we don't build schools for maintenance and facilities. We build schools to support students. And all that other stuff is there to support the students as well.
Yeah, and I think also when we talk about education, there's a lot of people with power. And also power over a lot of those mechanisms you spoke of that are not as prioritized. As education is, they're equally prioritized as education. You're saying, you know, that that should never be the case, right? You know, if we're, if we're competing with, you know, the food services with, you know, how many subs we have versus how many lunches, you know, that's a, that's a hard. That's a hard dilemma, but we understand both are needed equally in their own right. But let's kind of bring it back to, you know, when you were a kid, like, you know, why, why education, you know? Usually most black male educators usually get inspired by another educator like their mom or grandma. Was that you?
Not really. I was, I was inspired by my, my, my parents. My dad and mom, they were great parents. They were model parents. They. They were very supportive. They valued education, and e- to the, even to the extent that, I mean, I, I probably did. And as most kids, we moved, I'm originally from Illinois. And when we came to Detroit, they insisted that I go, they found out about U of D High Schools, all boys.
Yep.
Jesuit High School in Detroit. And, you know, they insisted I go there. I fought them tooth and nail. I did not want to go at all. All of the kids in my neighborhood went to a school that's no longer in existence, Redford High School. And actually enough to Benedictine High School too. So I'm a West Side guy. And those, those were all, you know, where all the kids from my neighborhood went to school. And, you know, I, they, they just insisted that that's where I was going to get the best education and the most opportunity. And it ended up being true. I mean, I, I attribute a lot of my academic success to, to my experiences at U of D High. Despite the fact that, you know, it wasn't my, my choice to be there. So that, that was something that, you know, impressed upon me the importance of of education. But I never really had a teacher model. In fact, you know, the people tell you, people teach you two things, what to do and what not to do. I have more examples of what not to do.
Yeah, let's talk about that. Why, why were they not, why weren't they inspir- inspiring for you? Why were they not models? And what were they telling you not to do real briefly?
Well, I think, and it goes back to what I was saying, you know, relative to being treated every day as an important day. Because that might be that special day for a particular child. You know, I felt a loss a lot of times ignored, you know. You know, not, a lot of times, you know, I wasn't, I was the only African American male or one of the few African American males. And, and I wasn't, I didn't feel like I was a priority all the time. And it wasn't until I got to, to undergraduate school where I started feeling appreciated. It wasn't the first two years. It was near the end of the experience when I started having, you know, professors that were like, very similar demographically to me. And had some very interesting perspectives on, on, you know, the, the information that we were learning. And introduced me to opportunities. That was the kind of investment that I was looking for as a K twelve student. But that I didn't really get. I, I didn't have a teacher that was endearing to me or I was endearing to them. It just, it just wasn't that way.
Yeah, I didn't either, unfortunately. And if I did, they were a dime a dozen. And if I did, everyone loved them too. I could think about my sixth grade teacher, Mr. James. He was just always tell these just captivating stories. He, he was the class where, you know, I made sure I read at least five books and I completed my reading log for his class. Because, you know, that's where you read The Outsiders. I remember his class. And then I'm just thinking about teachers specifically, right? You know, I get what you're saying. It's not as deep as you sound as like lost, like no, literally like, do you feel affirmed? Do you feel like, you know, you are being elevated here with everything that you're bringing, you know, are you just another number? And I think, you know, a lot of kids, especially black male kids, deal with that. Let's quickly talk about, you know, U of D Jesuit. So U of D Jesuit, for people who don't know, it's a private school in Detroit. It's a very prominent high school in Detroit. And, you know, even though, you know, majority, it's a majority black city. The, like you said, the demographics there were, were a little bit different than the city. Just kind of talk about that, like what those dynamics, right? And you said your friends, you know, went to Redford, you know, why did you not want to go to U of D Jesuit? Even though we all know why your parents, you know, wanted you to, but why did, why were you resistant, right? You know?
Well, I was a stranger there. And, and the other thing is the demographics at U of D Jesuit now are very different.
Right.
It's very reflective of the city now.
Right.
But then, most of the kids were from Rose Point, St. Clair Shores. I mean, you know, the black kids were from Palmer Wood, Sherwood Fours. I, I lived on the West Side, so I didn't know any of those people. And.
Was it a culture shock?
Um, not really, because, you know, I think my parents, and this goes back to, to my parents and the importance that they placed on education. And their being together as, as a strong couple, making our household strong.
Right, right.
I knew where I was. I had a base because of them. And I think unfortunately, that's, that's not true of a lot of our kids these days. And I think that's why it's so much more important for us to, you know, fill in those gaps where we can. And treat, you know, them with the respect they deserve. Not everybody's as blessed as I was to, to have that. But yeah, I mean, U of D, I got a quality education, but the, the thing is you can't, education is a, is a very personal thing. The relationship between teachers and students is extremely personal. That's one of the flaws that we have in our current system. Where our attempts to use assessments to determine success. Yeah, and it's, it is kind of a thorough, generic approach. That's not, that's not the way it works. And, and there's a lot of research that, that supports what I'm saying, that it's very custom, it's very personal. And it's not necessarily something that can be captured with a standardized assessment. So I think there's, obviously, we need to make sure that the curriculum is being delivered in alignment with the expectations and so forth. And we need to make sure that the enacted curriculum is what is expected. But we also need to make sure, and I think more importantly, that the students are learning. You can teach all you want, but it's really not teaching until a student learns. And I don't think our focus is on learning outcomes in a, in an authentic way, you know, as, as much as test results or what have you.
Dr. Kirkland coming on a Calona Podcast, dropping a lot of gems, man. Appreciate you, man. These are the type of conversations I really, um. This is why I do these type of podcasts, is just, you know, kind of reset and to let people know, like, you know, it's, it's not, it's not fun and games. Like, we have a lot of work to do. And so something like you're talking about, like, being culturally responsive or just aspects of being culturally responsive. Um, in education, right? You know, culture, do you acknowledge it? Do you understand it? Do you embrace it? Or do you do the opposite? And then are you responding, right? Or how do you respond to those different cultural elements in the classroom? In your pedagogy, in your way of teaching? Like you said, it's personal. You know, I just think about like, you know, performances. And just when people get up and they perform or someone does a speech, you know, there's just a moment of. Connection between you and the audience before the performance happens. And I think teachers, we kind of miss that sometimes. Because we have so many reasonable things going on, right? If we just kind of stop and pause and just try to like hone in on that connection first before any, uh, any content can be delivered. You know, classrooms can always be transforming. Teachers are doing that every day.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, so, yeah, so you got your, you know, your Sigma fraternity, right? You know, your Divine Nine, right? So just kind of talk a little bit more about, you know, what, as an adult growing up, you know, as a young educator. And being in the system, working in the system, you know, why did you want to, you know, get your doctorate? Why did you want to become a, you know, philosopher in this? And, you know, what, what is, what are some of those struggles you're experiencing now?
Well, I, I'm, I'm at a point, I guess not so much, I, I'm, I'm starting with the last part. Personal struggles are not necessarily where I am right now in my, my career. I, I've been blessed to have options. And I think that's, that's the, that comes as a result of, of being in the field for a while. I came to Detroit Academy of Arts and Sciences as, as a blessing. Because I started a school in twenty twenty, right in the middle of the pandemic.
Yeah.
And it was a challenge the entire time. We ended up having to close three years later when the. Ended because we could not solve a facility challenge. We, we just could not. We, we were actually housed within Wayne County Community College's Northwest Campus, which was awesome. Because we are, we were an early middle college. An early middle college is a school where the students can gain high school. College credit along with their high school credit.
Yeah.
So, but it's a program that is different from dual enrollment from the standpoint that they're not just getting random credit. Their credits are going towards program completion and that they will have an associate's degree when they complete their four years. And just today, I was looking at some of the files. One of the great things about, you know, the weekends, you get a chance to, to do some, some of your. You know, some of the tasks that you don't get a chance to do. And I was putting some things together, filing them away. And I had a chance to, to pull up the transcripts from all of our high school students from Wayne County College. And I was, you know, how do you kind of, you don't really think about how profound things are. Until you have the, the benefit of the time to, to really reflect.
Yeah.
I looked at the, the amount of credits these kids achieved.
Wow.
Three years. And, and my wife and I, she was part of the program. We were like, wow.
Yeah.
Easy.
Yeah, man. Congratulations.
Oh, man. It, it was, it's the kids. I mean, they, they were serious. We, we picked, we got the right kids. They, they wanted it. Achieved it. I mean, I, I'm thinking of a young lady. She's now in her junior year. And she's got twenty college credits. Her transcript is as full as, as adults. And so when she, and she's out of school, she was blessed enough to, we, and we really fought to try to get kids in schools that have programs similar to ours. So she's in Ferndale right now. They have a dual enrollment program, not.
Yeah.
Middle college, but she, because of her transcript with Wayne County Community College and her program already being set up for. All she has to do is follow her, her program and she can have her associate's degree as we plan to, to help her to achieve. So it's just, it's blessed, it's, it's a blessing to be able to be a part of that stuff. But I don't personally have challenges. I thank God for the options. I thank God for, you know, some of the things that, that I'm still inspired to do. I'm writing right now. I don't know what the writing is going to culminate as, hopefully a book, but I don't know. I keep, you know, I, I like, I, I love researching writing. So one of the worst things that, when I was writing my dissertation, one of the things that delayed me in getting it done was every time I came upon a new topic. I would go down that wormhole, you know, because.
Right, right.
Interested. And I finally, my chair finally said, hey, you know, do all that on your own time. I want to make sure where you get done. And I'm sick of, of having discussions every time you come in about a new topic. So I had to buckle down and, and get it over with. But, yeah, I, from that standpoint, I, I'm, I'm good personally. I'm sorry, what was the first part of the question?
Yeah, nah. And so I, I really appreciate you answering just the aspect of just like. The challenges you face in education, you know, you know, personally, are really, you know, not real personal struggles. It's just things that you do because it's your calling and you have good days, you have bad days. But again, like as far as. Why did you want to get into education, right? You know, so, and then how did you go from where you at now? Where you're like a doctor, you're like you're admin, like you said, you participating more in just power roles where you have more responsibility. I know for me, I always tell people, I don't want to be admin. I don't want to be admin education because it's just too much responsibilities. The money, you definitely get good money, but it's going to, you're working for every one of those dollars because, you know, you don't get your summers, right? It's just a lot of responsibility. And I'd just rather be a teacher where I can, you know, have some flexibility.
Yeah, I, I agree with you completely on that part. As far as, and I think this is a misconception for a lot of people and, and particularly teachers. They, they think that, you know, you might make a hundred, twenty, a hundred, thirty thousand dollars a year, what have you. But you live and work, you live and breathe that job twenty-four, seven, three hundred and fifty-two, you know. There's no summer off. And when, when things happen, I mean, I've been driving around, you know, Highland Park. You know, that. I remember a time when, when I was first one on the Southwest Side of Detroit, a family had, unfortunately, there was a fire that burned them out of their house.
Yeah.
You know, and this was like four in the morning trying to help them get placed. It's, it's, I mean, I, I told the staff one time. I, I did a presentation, I literally did an hourly rate of my salary and their salary. And they made more than me. I mean, I was, I was making chump changes basically on an hourly basis because I was working all the time. And so i- if, but the, the thing is, it's not work. You've heard this. It's not work when you love it and you live it. And so that, I don't, I never really counted the pennies because I, I loved what I, I always have loved what I've done.
Yeah.
I like leading more than what I'm doing now, to be honest with you. I mean, I, I love the contact with the kids. I, I needed to be reconnected with that for a lot of reasons to, to kind of readjust some of my leadership. I know one thing that I, I recognize is that I'm going to take, when I get back into a leadership position, I am going to take a lot off teachers' place. You know, how much, you know, they're inundated with busy stuff that really doesn't have anything to do with teaching for learning. And as a leader, I can't talk out of both sides of my mouth. If I'm telling you prioritize these students, prioritize your, your instructional craft. And make sure that you're aligning your, your delivery with the curriculum expectations. Then that's where your time and your focus needs to be, not on, you know, whatever. And I'm not going to mention stuff, but not, you know, some of the stuff that's, that's not as important. That, that could be, that could be done by somebody else, you know, including me, you know, as, as a leader. So just, just good to have perspective. And, and I always had thought that I was a great teacher leader. That I understood and respected, you know, what teachers do. But, and I, and I had, but probably not to the, the level that I, you know, that I thought. And I feel good to have had this, this opportunity to reconnect and, and to do the work firsthand. So that I can, you know, have a different approach when I, when I get back into decision-making roles.
Yeah, so I tell people, you know, educators, we either run for two of the Cs. It's either the craziness or the comfort.
That's right.
And I feel like we have to have a balance of two. We can't just be too comfortable because if we're too comfortable, we stop learning, right? We just get caught up in that one job where we've been teaching the same kids, which is fine, you know. But just because you teach that way, it doesn't mean that's going to work effectively in a different context, right? But then when we talk about the craziness, right, the craziness is kind of like, it's kind of keeps you up at night, right? It's the stuff that keeps you like, dang man, I don't know. Your, your wife is talking to you, your friend's talking to you, all you do is thinking about the craziness. Because it's so, it's, you kind of love it, right? It's so, uh, because you want to fix the problem, right? Because we're problem solvers. But my question to you is, and I'm kind of hearing like just a reoccurring theme, and I'm also seeing a lot in Detroit. That Detroit, because of disparities, you know, the innovation is so needed, disparities are real. You can get like what you were saying, a, like a mini community college, right? Have it work for two, three years maybe, right? And it'll have progress ran by a black dude or whatever you want to call it, right? We got, we, we're finally doing the work that we want. And then it'll get closed down because of funding, because of infrastructure. Because of the system, right? And I've heard that story multiple times. I've seen the story so many times of just people like you and I. Who we, we, we got the position, we got the power, we even got the results.
Yeah.
Right? Proof of concept. But because of the, what's the word? The, the, the magnitude of the problem and the resources that are limited sometimes, you know. You know, we kind of go unnoticed or not go unnoticed, it's just like, things don't last forever, you know, and then you go on to the next role. What is that? What is that dynamic? And then before you respond, also like, we have schools, right? That are ran literally by fifteen people, twenty people, you know what I mean? School districts that are ran by probably thirty people. Maybe less than that, right? Why is that a problem?
Because things become myopic. And I, and I think also the system serves itself. You know, so people who are true to the bureaucracy, it's just like, it's just like anything. I mean, if the bureaucracy serves you as an individual. And, and you come up through the ranks and, you know, you, you, you know, you, you, you've mastered the system. Then you want to preserve it just naturally.
What do you mean by that? What do you mean by that?
Well, I mean, i- if, if you're focused, there, there's a saying that. Managers do things right. Leaders do the right things. I think we have a lot of managers in education. And, and it's, and this is not an indictment, that, that these people are not malintended. I think that, you know, it just, the same thing in a classroom, teachers, you know, a lot of times I think are, are both challenged students struggle. Because a lot of our teachers, not everybody, I wasn't one. The, the, the school system worked for them. They, they were good kids and they got, they did their homework and. You know, they had breakfast and mom kissed them on the forehead and they went to work and they, you know, to school and they worked hard and they, they did their best. And they wanted to be on honor roll and they wanted to be valedictorian and. and they, they did their best and they wanted to be an honor roll and they wanted to be valedictorian and they, they, you know, all that stuff worked for a lot of us, but it doesn't work for probably about four fifths of the kids that we encounter. And, but we're, we're cultivating that same old system over and over again, and we're supporting it and facilitating it to the detriment of outcomes. And I think that's one of the things that we lose sight of in education is. And, and the, the attempts, uh, and I, I, I was saying earlier about, you know, I, I'm not a big fan of standardized assessment, but I understand why we do it. And, and there's got to be something. I don't think that's the answer. But in the, in the meantime, I guess that's what we're left with.
It's the most fair, it's fair, it's the most fair at the moment.
Find some way to be outcome oriented, but more authentically than tests. Because that doesn't necessarily mean, i- i- if the main thing is to have students graduate from high school, test results don't have anything to do with that. The, the kids can, cannot do well on, I mean, of course, the SAT plays a role, but colleges are diminishing the, the importance of, of those, uh, tests to get into, to, uh, their universities. And, and we know those of us who, who've had to endure, um, the testing situation, recognize that, uh, even, even when the, the universities and colleges said they value, uh, SAT and ACT scores.
Yeah.
They were, they were only predictive of, or allegedly predictive of how kids would perform the first year. And, you know, their, their freshman year, not, not whether they would graduate. And so I, I think somehow we got to put our, our, uh, focus on graduation, on, uh, skill attainment, on, um, you know, career attainment, things that have more tangible outcomes, things that will be more impactful to the students and families. And let's just be honest, the community. I mean, we're, we're, we're delivering students who are authentically educated, who have, who leave the school process or system in going into a career and, and or college. Then we, we're less likely to have people who are illiterate, who are going to be wards of the state or, you know, some kind of, um, you know, uh, uh, carana.
Yeah.
On the community, uh, we'll, we'll have much more successful people and our community will be better, you know, so.
And so just to cut you off, thank you so much. And hopefully you're really liking the conversation. I'm gonna get you out of here in a couple minutes, man. Um. And so I know, I don't know if you heard about, like, a lot of companies are saying that they don't want four-year degrees anymore. So do you think degrees don't matter anymore or is it just the masters? My mama used to always say, Calvin, she used to tell me this 15 years ago. Calvin, you can't just get your four year, you gotta get your masters because the four year is becoming the masters. So do degrees matter or is it the masters that matter?
Well, the degrees matter. All of them, they all matter. Four-year colleges matter.
Yeah, right, right.
Professional, uh, uh, degrees, J Ds, M Ds.
So our company's saying they don't need them no more.
Because they don't need them.
Right, right.
We don't need them.
Right.
So these things are cyclical, right? So right now they're saying, w- w- what are the biggest, uh, you know, I was, uh, the, the, uh, director of K 12 relations for Henry Ford College before I started the, the early middle college. And so a lot of interface with the, um, with the business world was part of my, my job. And they were always talking about the need for schools to create situations where kids could develop their soft skills.
Yeah.
You know, and, and they said, we'll take care of the on-the-job training. What you teach them is not going to make them ready to do our work. We'll have to do that when they get here. But we just want to, so they're, they're telling us they want, you know, what they want. But that's not going to make the individual more marketable, you know, or give the person. I mean, education is not just about jobs. It's about having the ability to, to be, to think critically. And to, to, um, you know, maybe foster some discernment and challenge the system. Maybe, maybe the education you get may not be the, the, uh, job you're looking for, but maybe you're going to be the individual that has, uh, the insight to be able to say, this needs to be fixed. This is not the way things should be. I want to challenge that. But that's really what should be, uh, and, and I, you know, when I think about my education at UD Jesuit, that's really what I got. I got the, the really, really in-depth, um, you know, education, the authentic education, not just a standardized education.
Hmm.
When you think about standards, are you really talking about a low?
Expectations.
Yeah. Standard doesn't mean outstanding standard.
Right. It's the average.
That's the expectation, right? The average. And, and, uh, that's not good enough. When, when really it should be more customized, more authentic, much more deeper and it should.
More equitable.
Yeah. And make the person want to challenge things, cha- challenge society, challenge the system, what have you. I don't, I kind of got off on a, on a tangent.
You, you're hitting it, man. I got the last question for you, brother, man. I got you, dog. Thank you so much for coming on Calvin on the podcast, bro. Hopefully this has been a great conversation. I got you, man. I know you. So don't, don't trip, man. I got you, man. So what are, what is education getting right? And obviously we talked about a lot of wrong things, but let's just talk about what, what are they getting right? What are three things that education is getting right and that you're hopeful for?
I think that people are starting to see the, the necessity and the importance of connecting careers and, and, um, in the education.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree.
So we're, we're starting to have much more serious conversations. I'm, I'm not sure if, if it's, um, a, at the point where we can, you know, start bragging about it, but we're having some serious conversations about how important it is to be culturally, uh, efficient as an education system and, and to accept the individuality of, of the student. And I, I, I am very, um, uh, excited about the fact that, uh, in most places and, and, and even here in the state of Michigan, we're hearing a lot more about being, uh, you know, restorative in our practices.
Right.
Student discipline because it's not just that they're misbehaving because they're little jerks.
Right.
Or misbehaving because of a lot of deep trauma, a lot of challenges that they're going through, uh, socio-economically, um, whatever. You know, psychological, medical, and you can't fix those kinds of things with some kind of reactionary punitive approach. That's the reason why we have to school the, you know, prison pipeline. So.
Right, right, right.
Very happy about, you know, uh, even at the state level, people having discussions about, now we need to be more cautious about how we administer discipline.
And real briefly, right? Your role right now, right? It's a very, uh, special role where you're able to give kids those time to restore, give kids time to work on a social skill, give kids time to process their emotions. Um, that's also still an academic environment, but it's, you know, it allows them to do it in a space where they can co-generate, grow at their own pace and still be able to flourish like the other peers. Just again, why is that important for kids that may need that?
Oh, man. I, I think everybody could benefit from a reset. And, and I think it's more important for the least of us to have those opportunities. You know, we're talking about a vulnerable class of, of student, a vulnerable class of person, uh, that, that, uh, has not had success. If we truly believe that every, every child deserves an opportunity, a program like JAG, uh,
Yeah.
gives them that. Uh, we put them in a, you know, a, a more, not restrictive environment, but a self-contained environment where things are not as chaotic and there's not as much stimulus. Uh, and they get a chance to, to process things. And we, I get to have some real deeper conversations with them about behavior, about, you know, their realities, about strategies for navigating when they come back and, and creating a hopefulness about going back. By design, um, you know, we, we really don't want kids to be in the JAG program. Uh, really ideally it should only be about a month. Unfortunately, it's been longer than that for many of them. Um, but it, it, it's doing a couple of things. One, it's focusing on, and this is the most important part, focusing on those kids that are struggling, giving them opportunities.
Yeah.
And, and to, to give them the break from all that hyper stimulus to, uh, to, to reflect, you know, on their behavior and to, to make some, some very distinctive changes. And they're not going to be perfect when they come back. That was one of, one of my frustrations. I, I think people think that they're some kind of car wash. They go through the, the JAG program, they come out. They're kids and then these are, this is a special class of students.
I love it.
Be better. They're not going to be perfect, right?
Yes, yes. You're doing it, Doc. You're doing it, man. We all know you. We all know you're amazing kids because they're our kids. We, we, you know, we love them. We love them like we love you. So again, thank you so much. Again, blessing the podcast with all your knowledge. You definitely went to college. So last question, man, what do you want people to get from the podcast?
Hey, I, let's keep the conversations going, you know, let's keep the conversations going. And maybe when I finish whatever I'm writing, I'll come back and.
Yeah, man. Yeah, bro. Thank you so much, man. This is dope. Nah, man, you like to talk, so I.